This meeting to order, meeting of the Dartmouth Select Board, June 16th, 2025. All members are present, therefore, we will just take roll call votes and, or rather, roll votes. I ask that we all stand for a pledge of allegiance and then remain standing.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like us to stand, please. A moment of silence for our veterans who served in previous wars, who serve overseas currently, and those serving at home. And before we sit, I'd like us to also take a moment to remember Nicholas Joseph, a member of the Dartmouth High School class of 2025, who lost his life last night in a motorcycle accident within our town.
Rest in peace.
Thank you. Our first order of business is to review the Select Board Code of Conduct. And I'd given this, a copy of this to you a few weeks ago to look at it. We've signed this, you know, every year. Did anyone read through it and see that there's something that we needed to update or tweak?
I'm sure at some point along the line, we'd want to do it, but not now. Still feeling, no, isn't it?
Yes, we adopted this in 2021. So, looks good. I will pass it to sign. And then I will ask Gary that you share this with other boards and committees, so that they can take it to their boards.
Actually, if it's going to be shared with other boards, then some wording has to be changed, so that it, the word Select Board is out of it. So we'll up.
So what I will ask is that they look at it and personalize it for their, but all boards and committees should have something, and it should be as comprehensive as this one is. Thank you.
The enforcement issue, something they'll have to look at too, because it'd be different than ours as well.
All right. Next on the agenda is something that we discussed early in the month of May, and with great sadness, accepted a letter from Tim Lancaster. So we have Tim here with us tonight. I want to read to you our official citation. Be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations to Timothy Lancaster in recognition of unceasing dedication to the town and the Parks and Rec Department for over 26 years as Superintendent of Parks and Director of Recreation, and for continuously improving the town's parks, including overseeing 28 town properties, designating Round Hill Beach as parkland, and constructing of the Dartmouth Recreation Parks and Trails. And I just want to revisit the letter that Tim sent to us back in May, because I, I mean, it was a wonderful history lesson. And, as he said, the ability to operate, because I'm zooming around here, his department with just two full-time people, supported by a staff of 60 seasonal employees, has been a model for other departments and municipalities. The term "do more with less" has been their motto for years. 26 years ago, we maintained five properties on a seasonal basis. And as it says, there are now, they operate and or maintain 28 sites year-round, including the oversight of several municipal buildings and town cemeteries. Additionally, on the way, we reduced our demand on the tax level and self-funded the recreation program. As we know, we just, at our most recent town meeting, we put forth that we would allow a $250,000 balance to be drawn upon for the rec department. And that would, with their own receipts, cover what they need to run the recreation department. And in addition to all of this, Tim, and Becky, for that matter, rescued the bucket, which is now, you know, just a cornerstone of a Ponte Gansett beach, and one of the draws, certainly for my grandchildren, on Wednesday night concerts, is the bucket. And now, after being very successful with that, this year, we launched the Bucket on the Go out at Round Hill Beach, which I can only imagine will be just as successful, because your price point is, is perfect for a family going out there for a beach day. So you leave us in very good stead, and it's still very sad to see you go. I'm glad you're leaving with good health. And being a resident of FIA District 1, I'm honored to have you as our chief. So, thank you, Tim. We have a couple of members of Parks and Rec with us tonight. One that I know has never shied away from a microphone.
Oh, no.
Keep it short.
Would either of you like to speak?
Of course, Joe.
This is him.
Twist, twist.
Unfortunately, our chairman and one of our staff, one of our other members are on vacation. But on behalf of Joan, Sarah, Jimmy, Sherry, myself, we hate to see him go. I'm glad to see where he's going down there. It's better for him, for his family. He did an outstanding job there. We're going to miss him. Sometimes he's a pain in the rear end with things that we do. We do have some meaningful discussions occasionally. He's been an asset to the town. He's done a lot over the years. Our interaction with him, I may have known him for a long time through his mom, but our interaction, we started when we were both on recreation, prior to the new park board, the way it was designed, when it was a separate board. That's when we started meeting with him. We all ran different youth groups. Again, he's, he's an asset. He's not going far. We do have him on speed dial if we need him. He has agreed to do that, which I think is wonderful. He's, he's a great employee who's leaving his position not angry about anything, which I think is a plus that gives to his character. Because our residents occasionally can be a little difficult with certain things, but he's never taken it personal, any type of discussions that we've had with him. It's always business on one hand, and if somebody disagrees with him on something, we have our business hat, we have our personal hat, never the two shall meet. I give him kudos for that. I think he would be wonderful on the FIA department, because he'll have a similar situation down there. Again, we're going to miss him. He's done a lot of things. But with that being said, we have a new person, we have new blood coming through now. She's been here for a long time. She is the succession plan for us, replacing Tim.
Was selected by the.
Good choice.
And successfully.
She's very familiar with the town, all the goings-on. Again, again, she is on speed dial with him, and I'm sure that that will work this. Even though they're working in separate divisions, not too far away, that's the beauty of it. A lot of our staff and the people that we work with, people that Tim worked with throughout the town, different department heads, we've had disagreements. We've had disagreements with you guys over the years, right? It's not personal, it's businesses, what's, what's best for the town. And I think that's what his character goes to, what's best for the town. Fourth of July, different holidays, we call him, he's on a softball field with his daughter, I'll be down. Okay? I'm sure that's created some problems for him over time with his wife and the kids, but that's just to prove the dedication. Becky, same situation here now. She's the next level. She's going to fall into place. She'll do a great job there. I says, and then we pick the new Becky. Whenever that comes up down the road, we'll move forward. All right? That's what's great about the town. We have plans in place. Again, Tim, again, thank you for all of his work on behalf of the board. You know, he's been a friend to us, colleague, and I'm not going to miss him, because he's down the street, so we'll see.
Not going away, right?
Tim, you don't have to make a statement, although if you'd like to, the mic is yours.
Never afraid.
But you do, you are going to have to come up to the board.
He's still on the clock until the 30th, so.
Oh, right, right.
So everyone is taking advantage of the last 10 years. Every day, some people, everybody's trying to get the last request in. So, I mean, look, obviously, I've worked with all of you for so many years, a lot of disagreements, I'll agree, but we've always worked it out. We've always been at least cordial to each other, and we've always worked for the best of the town. You know, we did a lot of firsts over the last 26 years. We were the first town in like the state, pretty close, if not the first, we were, we were pretty close to the first to go to a full revolving for our recreation. It was a model for other towns in Massachusetts. We developed multiple park sites. We did so with, through grant funding, et cetera. We, we built out, in fact, really, when I first started, the regional park property had been purchased, but the only thing considered a park north of Allen Street was the swing set at Cornell Pond. So, we've taken that, you know, at this point, you know, no one, no one realized, back when I was in high school and college, and I worked with Joe Armman at the Park Department, the Park Department truck never went north of, it only went north of Allen Street one time a year, and it was to go to Cornell Pond to clean it up, and then we'd like go back. Never went north of Allen Street. It was like going to a whole of the town. As sad as that may be, but we, you know, now, most of our stuff is north of Allen Street. So, we're, we're up there every day. The, you know, we've moved to a new facility that's larger, we've grown. Cemeteries, obviously, we did tremendous work in the cemetery area. We, we computerized that, we mapped it out. This is all, of course, with the help of the, the board members. And these board members, and all the board members I've worked with over the years, as well as Becky, who's been here just as long as I have. Actually, she was in the office before I even started. So, you know, it's, it's a team effort, and we've done it, and we're in a good place. And when I started to renovate things that I had originally put in, I knew that I'd been here a long time.
When you're fixing them again.
When you start to replace playgrounds that you originally put in, you know, you know you've been here a while. So, you know, I'll miss it. But again, I'm not going that far. A lot of people have come up to me, and, and I've really been taken back by the people, folks have come up and talked to me about it, and asked me to, you know, please be around. And I'm going to be around, so I'm just going to be down the street. And I have big shoes to fill down there, and hopefully I can do that. But I'll still be here for everyone if needed, so.
The one person I worry about in all of this is Becky, only because, should you be driving around the town and see something that you think is not quite right? I know, she's going to be on speed dial for that, too. Becky, have you overlooked something? So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I did warn her. That probably will, that probably will happen.
It might, it might. Well, come on up, Tim. Start with the, do, can you take a picture?
See you soon.
Here, Gary, here, hang on.
Want to take a picture with all the board members?
No.
Nope.
I think that'd be appropriate. I would.
She doesn't want to be, she doesn't want to, she doesn't want to take away from Tim. She already said that. So, we've already been forewarned. And if you know, if you know her, listen to Mrs. Lancaster, that's it.
We'll get a picture with her and Son after.
Mom has a list, by the way, Tim. Mom's got a list of things. She heard you might have some time now. So.
True story, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for everything. All right. We will move on. We have a Conservation Commission appointment. We have a letter in our packet from the Conservation Commission. And there we go, the audience is, the audience is gone. We have Conservation Commission has met with Donald Mersky, and has asked that we appoint Mr. Mersky to the board. And looking at his paperwork, you can see that he is a retired forester. I think there may be something in that background that may come into play.
Motion to appoint.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Second by Mr. McDonald. All in, oh, any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Mersky. You're officially on the board. Thank you. And moving next, right into a conservation, this is a revisement of the filing fees by the Conservation Commission. And we have Mark Garrett here to review these with us. So, thank you, Mark.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mark Garrett, Environmental Affairs Coordinator. Conservation has a rather complex filing fee structure, which we are trying to simplify and revise as we go along. And short of making drastic changes, we're trying to keep it consistent with the revised bylaw that was passed last year and approved by the Attorney General. And we're working on finalizing the regulations. So, we're trying to tie everything together. We last adjusted our fees in November of, well, actually, in October of 2023. They were put into effect November 1st, 2023. And fees, unfortunately, are fees, I understand that, but they need to represent covering the kind of work we do in our office. And it's a fee structure that I largely adopted. I didn't create it. It's, it's consistent with what Dartmouth has been charging basically right along, and tries to reflect just the increase in costs to do the work. And frankly, the projects are getting more complicated. They're getting more aggressive on lands that are far more limiting due to wetlands and water and the like. We talk about a lot of initiatives, water quality, green space, things of that nature. And for us at the technical level in the commission, that demands stringent analysis. And that analysis is getting protracted into longer and longer periods. I've got one that is a house development on the coast. It's been going for six months, and they haven't quite resolved all their technical issues. So, the fee adjustments represent that. The other thing that happens is that Dartmouth is the only town in the Commonwealth that has the Wetland A1 Assessment Program, which is where we go out and flag wetlands for smaller projects, under two acres, to save the homeowner, the public, the applicant, or the eventual applicant, monies upfront for wetland delineations. All other towns, you have to get a consultant to do that. Their rates are much higher than ours. So, for things like septic system repairs, small additions on houses, instead of making them go through an arduous consultant process, and then have to have an engineer to, to do the application and the plans, we at least help them with that first step. And that takes time out of, out of our day, and it's a service that the town has provided for many years. We're happy to do it. And I think that the community is happy that we do it, because it gives them a little bit of a break upfront. We raise the fees marginally, $50 to $100 across the board. The one thing we can't change is the state fees, which is what our fees are predicated on. The state has five criteria, and they have project types that fit within those criteria. The local fees are their fee with a multiplier of two. So, that covers our review under our bylaw, which is far more stringent than the Wetlands Protection Act itself. And it's a dual review, even though much of it is in parallel. Some of it is not, because we ask for things in Dartmouth, as do other towns, that go beyond the, the limits of the State Wetlands Protection Act. And that is why we review, we try to review our fees every year. This has been a little bit longer, just to keep them in line with what the work we're doing. There's always the question, how do they compare with fees in other towns? I don't think you can compare them. I've looked at other towns. Some towns haven't revised their fees since the early 2000s. And I'm talking about big towns. I'm not talking about small towns. I think Barnstable was in 2005. I don't know why. What I can say is, I think that what we, what we do is fair to the public, even though a increase in fees is always viewed upon as not being so great for the public, but I think it's commensurate with what we do, the services we provide. And we work very hard to not restrict growth. Unfortunately, the regulations do that, but we try to work with everybody so that they get pretty much what they want or some piece of it. And that takes a lot of time to interpret and create and craft the implementation of the regulations to not only protect the environment, but also protect private property rights and the use of private property. So, that's kind of my summary. I'll open to any questions.
Edit question.
Go ahead, Mr. Talabom.
Thanks, Mark. So, we have more and more, lots of restricted land protected, and we've developed a lot of land. So, what I think I hear you saying is that what's left that has issues may be more complex because that, because they're left. And therefore...
Well, let me, let me try to answer the question with this analogy. I started in this business 35 years ago. And the land we were looking at then, we called marginal. That was 35 years ago. I take half of the land that we were looking at 35 years ago for development today, because the land has become more and more marginal for a number of reasons. More complicated regulations, procurement of open space by either a land steward, like a, a land trust, DNRT is an example, or the town who purchases land for conservation purposes, which kind of restricts development, where now, a lot of lands are getting conservation restrictions placed on them, which further limits what you can do on the land. So, yeah, the subset of usable land is shrinking rather quickly. So, we are looking at things a lot closer to wetlands. We are looking at a scaling of development, which has increased over time. I mean, we, we call them mega mansions, McMansions, excuse me. Okay, we're building bigger houses than we used to. More bedrooms, more wastewater, more Title V issues, closer to wetlands. So, for somebody who has to sit and assess the environmental benefits or consequences, that, that is becoming more and more comprehensive as we go.
And that, as a consequence, that probably raises the frustration of the, the owner who's trying to build this.
It raises the frustration of everybody, you know, including the regulator, because the regulators, the regulator is trying to balance private property rights with environmental limitation. So, yeah, it is. It is, it is a firing line. And frankly, when we are limiting development, we are limiting maybe the biggest investment the applicant is going to make in their lives, in many cases. This gets really personal, you know, and you have to understand that frustration on their part. Unfortunately, there are rules, and we have to do our job too. So, what we like to do is try to balance it as best we can. Sometimes I'm a good guy, sometimes not so good.
It's happening more often now, because there's, these lands are more controversial.
Absolutely.
And lesser of them.
Yes. I mean, we're, we're, the, the supply is shrinking, the demand is growing.
Correct.
You know, I've done talks here in Dartmouth and in other places. Zero population growth is fiction. Population is growing and growing and growing. You're hearing the governor, housing shortages, we have, you know. So, it's a balance of this, this increased need, whatever that may be, and decreased supply for what's out there. Thank you, Mark.
I just have, Chris?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mark. Anything else other than the fees changed in, in this?
The, the text, I cleaned up. I did not change intent. I did not add requirements, nor did the Conservation Commission approve those kind of changes. It was just a reread, make it read simpler. As things get more complicated, you don't want to throw more complicated language, so it's trying to balance that. So, no, the intent upfront did not change. There was some wordsmithing, that's it.
Okay. The, the fees that are, that are charged, are there any entities in town that, that you waive them for?
Yes, we, when the town, when the town comes before us with an application, we waive fees. The only thing we can't waive is by law, it has to be legally advertised in the paper. So, the $75 charge has to be put forth. Now, typically, most departments have advertising budgets, those who would be applying for this sort of stuff. So, that's how it's handled. But for example, if somebody comes in, if DPW comes in with an RDA, we waive the RDA fee. There is no state fee for them. We can't waive the state fee. It's state fees if it's a notice of intent. But as far as the local portion of the filing fees, leaving out the legal ad, which is $75, we waive those all the time.
Okay. And the, where's the biggest jump? You said anywhere from 50 to 100. 50 on, or 100 on 110 is a bigger jump than 50 on 5,000. So, I'm trying to figure out as a percent.
Yeah, the last three, the last three, I think.
In the category area?
13 to 1,500, I think 2,000 to 2,500, and then 3,500 to 5,000. Those are huge projects. We're talking about 100-acre sites. And that's a lot of time, and that's a lot of work to go out there. And, you know, even if you're...
Very few.
Pardon?
And few of those.
We rarely see them, but we do, we do occasionally see something, and we had to kind of cover ourselves for that. But I will tell you, if I've seen two of those in my 10 years here in town, I've seen a lot.
All right. So, more importantly, up to the two acres, say, say, up to two acres, two to five acres, or 500 and 700 for delineation, right?
And previously, just so that you know, I just have a follow-up. There were two for two, up to two acres, previously.
Previous, yes.
And so now you've combined them, and before they were 400 and 500. And then there were two for two to five acres, which were 600 and 700. Now they're both, they're 700. And there were two different... And there were two differences in the five to ten, and eight hundred and nine hundred. Now they're just nine hundred for five to ten acres. Ten to twenty was thirteen hundred, now it's fifteen. Twenty to a hundred was two thousand, now it's twenty-five hundred. And the one hundred acre is the bigger jump at thirty-five hundred to five thousand. Upon review, that's...
If I could speak, Madam Chairman.
Yes, please.
One of the things I did in trying to simplify this was we broke things out, like when you say the two categories at two to five. One was for residential, one was for commercial. I understand why we had two different price ranges for two categories of work. However, the frank matter of fact is, it's the same amount of work, whether it's commercial or residential, for us. So, I mean, that's, so I saw no reason to have six categories when I could have three.
Two acres is two acres.
Pardon?
Two acres is two acres.
Two acres is two acres, right.
Now, the one area that I saw, oh, Chris, go ahead.
So, Mark, this is more of a question on the process, right? So I'm trying to wrap my head around how the town informs the public, and the reason that I asked about the fees was because somebody probably is at home going, okay, hold on a second, you know, trying to get this number down. When the board makes a decision on something like this, a change in fees, wordsmithing it, cleaning it up, what was the process? So you do that in a board meeting, it's approved, and then what?
Well, the process is that I do it. I present it to the board, okay? And the board relies on me, the commission relies on me. I've been doing this a long time, you know, I've been in this business, and I've seen a lot of other towns and how they operate when I was a consultant. So I put together a draft of what I think. Now, I submit it to them for their review and comment. I will say that the one comment I got was, you know, you might want to think about charging more. And I said, no, 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 we're not going there. I think that I upped the fees fairly and did not get overly aggressive. And again, for you, just so you understand, the state law provides for us a conservation fee, which is almost like an enterprise fund, but it's not called an enterprise fund. And all of our, all of those fees go into that, and the purpose of that fee is simply to better protect wetlands. I mean, that's generally what it says. That that can be used for staff, that could be used for purchasing, that can be used for donating to a cause in which you're protecting or better regulating jurisdictional wetland resources, whatever they are, and they're not all water, some of them are pretty high and dry. But, so that's where the monies go. The commission approved what you're looking at, and then what we'll do is, based on what you folks do tonight, our goal is to have these kick in at the turn of the fiscal year, so July 1st of this year. And what we will do is we will publicly notice, we will use DCTV. I will probably contact, her name escapes me.
Magnolia.
Magnolia, thank you. I'm saying, she's got a nickname, which is easy to remember. Yeah, Maggie. And get the information out and let everybody know, you know, that this is happening. We don't, we don't want them coming in saying, here's my five hundred dollars. Well, no, it's now seven hundred. So we will make that available. We also post the document that you have, should you approve it, that will be posted on the website. And we also post it on Viewpoint, so that when they go in, when they open up the conservation page, if you've ever done it, in big, bold, red letters, we say, hit this link, this tells you how to file in the town of Dartmouth, and this document comes up with the filing fees.
All right, so my point in asking that question, Mark, is your presentation has been very thorough, and I'm interested in how each of the departments and committees, when they make these types of changes, what the timeframe is, right? Between the time that it's approved by a board in town and the time that it becomes the law of the land, right? Your approach, from what I can see and what you've explained, is a lot more comprehensive than some of the other boards in town, okay? And that's my concern. July 1st is a great way to implement the change, right? It gives people an opportunity to see it, to see what the change is, how it affects a current application, if they're preparing an application. So it goes to some extent that we're going to talk about probably later on, but I appreciate the way that you've, you know, that you've handled the process. Thanks.
Mr. O'Neill, I think you make a great point, though. We cannot have boards being arbitrary about when they're changing these. If everything's going to change and July 1st makes sense, then we need people to start thinking about that. Certainly not this year, but as we go forth. We don't want them arbitrarily changing.
Right. Well, and I'm sure Mark knows, the standard right now by the charter is that if you want to make a change to rules and regulations, you go downstairs and you post it on the board at the clerk's office, they chime it in, send you a copy that it's attested to. And if nobody complains about that change, ten days later, it becomes the law of the land, and nobody knows, and nobody knows what's going on.
No one's looking at that bulletin board.
So I've tried to change this a couple of times, and I just can't seem to get any traction, so I'm not...
It's very hard to do what you want to do when you have so many multiple platforms out there, and everybody has their favorite, you know? So they go to X, because that's where they get all their news, or they go to the town website, because that's where they get all their news. So...
You know where they don't go? The clerk's bulletin board.
Because it's paper and it's pinned to the wall.
There you go, thank you. You're making my point for me.
I'm very old-school, Chris. But, yeah, we try to, we try to get this out to everybody as quickly as possible.
Mr. McDonald?
I'm good.
Nothing. The one thing I have is, in the 2023 version, there's an agricultural wetland site inspection using the wetland site inspection form A1 or the request for determination review active agriculture sites. And there were several, you know, up to two acres, two to ten, ten and over. That has been completely removed from this.
Right. It's commercial, residential, agricultural, it's all...
All encompassing.
Again, it's the same work. The end product really means nothing to us at the delineation level. The end product means something to us at the application for development process. You walk a site, you walk a site. It's weedy, it's woody, it's thorny. It doesn't matter if it's going to be a gas station or it's going to be a large residence.
Well, thank you, Mark, because you make a point that these fees are intended to cover the cost of the people doing their job.
That's it.
So it doesn't matter, as you said, if you're walking a piece of land, what it's going to become to do the job, that's what you need. So thank you. Anything else?
Motion to approve.
We have to vote on this, right?
Motion to approve, made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Any other questions? On favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And hopefully all those thousands of people at home watching us tonight know that this takes effect.
There are more people to watch you than you think.
Mr. Mersky, before you leave, would you mind coming up and just meeting the board? Would you like to say anything about your, I'm sorry, moved right through you.
The microphone.
You can go to the microphone. The board would like to hear a little bit more about yourself.
Okay, my name's Don Mersky, Conservation Commission applicant. And on my background, I have a master's degree in forestry from the University of New Hampshire. Can't recall the year even. I'm a retired forester, worked for a number of years for some pulp and paper companies in northern New England, Boise Cascade, Brown Company, Mead Paper. Over the years, worked as a forester, forest district manager, and a timber sale manager during that time. And then in 2004, the company that I worked for at the time, it was Mead West Faco, sold off their timberlands. And so at that point in time, I switched careers, worked briefly for Morgan Stanley as a financial advisor, and then became an RN and worked in the emergency department at St. Luke's Hospital until about 2020, and when I retired from that, so...
Quite a diverse career.
Yeah, I say the, I worked the first part of my career with plants and the second part with animals.
Yes, you did. Well, thank you so much, and thank you for giving back to the town.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
If they get any cuts in the field, he'll be right there. All righty, next, we have the Bristol County Advisory Board representative appointment. And Mr. Tattelbaum served previously. Is this something you'd like to do again or open it up to another member?
I'm going to have to pass.
Okay. Anyone in hot pursuit?
I'll do it.
Oh, thank you.
Who said I'd do it?
I think I did this years ago.
You had big shoes to fill.
Right, Stanley.
Yeah, that's all, so...
Stanley has nominated himself, so...
I'll second that nomination.
I applaud that.
Quick, before he changes his mind.
Anyone want, before he changes his mind, can we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Stanley.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You just have to fill this out.
They don't want me up there.
Site pin? All right. I know that.
All right, next on the agenda, I asked them to put down the town meeting recap last week or two weeks ago when we met, with the eve of town meeting. And we went on to town meeting on June 3rd. It was a, it was a great meeting. We had a lot of folks that spoke up and spoke out, and I just wanted to go over a few things, because as you can imagine, I take copious notes during that meeting, so I know who and what was being talked about. One of the things that came up is the capital improvements. And I would like, in the future, Gary, I'm thinking maybe a July meeting, to either have you or members of the CIP to show us, and therefore the general public, all the requests that were made of CIP. And we know that you go through knowing how much money we have, which is out of free cash, what can we afford this year, and the group, along with the department heads who have put those requests down, you know, you kind of decide which ones we can afford. But I think for the group, and of course, the town meeting members and folks at home, it would be good to see all the possible projects, if we had all the money in the world, what people would like to see. Well, that was one. Another one that came up was dealing in Article 12 through 16 were solar credits. And so if we could get someone, invite someone to a future meeting that can explain to us where we are with solar in Dartmouth, how do we get these credits, and then how the credits are distributed, okay?
That would be...
We can even have Kathy Stanley come in.
Can Kathy do it?
Yeah, the program's been around for a while, and she could probably even run a report and show us how much we've...
That would be great. I know that we have talked about it here, how each department, how they determine how much each department gets to be credited, but I think it would be helpful for the general public and certainly our town meeting members who were confused.
I think Tim Bobby will have that information.
So Tim, Kathy Stanley.
I would invite Kathy Stanley.
I think that would be great.
If we get her down here, the better off we're going to be.
And the CIPC request, we do have that, I have that list. The CIPC committee goes over that, and obviously, we look at all those, so we can do a quick briefing to the board on the total.
Thank you. I just think that that was something that had come up in my notes. The other thing, I just want to let you all know that relative to Article 21, which was the camping bylaw, I have attended a number of the Dartmouth Community Social Outreach Team meetings and have spoken to all of you about the work that they've been doing. And at the town meeting, when the sheriff spoke, I will let you know that we were all taken aback. We haven't heard from the sheriff previously, but we will now be inviting him to the next meeting, so we can see if we can take him up on the offer of cleaning up the site that we have in question, and some of the other things that he offered that afternoon. Yes, yes, of course.
I think that it's another one of those town meeting articles that kind of lost in translation, because what you had to say at our meeting, and that's why I supported it, because of your perspective and what you thought it was going to solve, I think it became a bit, a different, almost a different language. So it may be something we should work on to revisit, to put something together that would be something more acceptable and understandable, and maybe less vague. Does that make sense?
I think, from my perspective, it was definitely a concern of the fee structure. So I know in the future, we've talked to both the chief and Anthony Savistano about talking to our group about why the fees. I think the fees were something that people were put off by, how are we going to charge these people who were down on their luck? That was one. Also, there was a sentiment that this was anti-homeless. It really isn't anti-homeless. It's a tool in the toolbox of those folks that go out to speak to the individuals who are unhoused to say, listen, work with us, we're going to find you housing, or this could happen.
We had groups like that here before that actually explained what they do and what they're trying to do, and to basically, excuse me, to what you mentioned during the town meeting. But I think there were, the sentiment was, they thought it was, it was just too much too strong.
And which part of it? Just the bylaw was too strong?
Yeah, that's the way I felt. Not me personally, I'm just saying that, that's what I thought.
Okay, from listening to their concerns.
Yeah, concerns.
That one had a lot of discussion points. Yes?
I also, one of the comments came from, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I give a respect for him, from Buddy Baker Smith, who's a career, and I think that he would be someone I would like to listen to to say, okay, can we put something together that makes sense? Because he was, I think he, he was very much against it. I'd like to know why. Maybe there's a way to solve it through his lens as opposed to others as well. He had a lot to offer.
He and his wife, both.
Question, yeah. And then the final one that I wanted to just, is talking about Article 9 and 10, which were the salaries and the budgets. And I want everyone sort of at home to know that before we go to the next town meeting, June 2026, which is when we typically present budgets and salaries, we will have completed a classification and compensation study for town departments, town employees. Not the school department, this is the other departments, not the police department, but the other departments within the town. We're going to be doing this class and comp study, and it will determine the rate of compensation. What we're looking to do is make sure that we're at least at that 50th percentile, that we're compensating people appropriately for the job that we're asking them to do. So we're doing that this year, and we expect that we will have that information before we construct the budget for next year. Also, part of our review of department work will be to review the positions that each department recommended during the budgeting process that they went through with Gary. They talked to Gary about if they could increase their personnel and what they could do in their department. So that will be another aspect during the class and comp study. Do they have someone on board that could do that, or how do we restructure their department? Do they need someone? So in fact, it may result next year in us saying that we need additional personnel somewhere. And then another thing that we're doing is the insurance. As Gary has mentioned previously, he is leading a group to look at the group insurance that we currently buy into, to look at other group insurances, to see if there's a better deal for our employees and for our town. for our employees and for our town. And we do expect that we will have that information as well by a year from now. So we have a lot on the horizon. And the final piece is that we did talk about the Budget Advisory Group, and that task force is the, the merits of it are being drafted currently, which would then review all budgets for a better understanding of each department. And we will be presenting that. So it'll have members of FinCom, School Committee, Select Board, and it will give us sort of those three lenses to remind ourselves that we are one town, it is one pool of money, it is one budget, and how we can help each other, looking for repetition between departments. Right now, we do have a floater that we use at the town hall, which serves, serves in several departments to give them that additional help, but we'll again be looking at everything. What else can we do to, while we would love to save money, really what it's going to be, are, are we using the money that has been graciously granted to us through town meeting, are we using it with fiscal responsibility? So now that I've yammered on and on, regarding town meeting, did anyone else want to speak? Dave?
I would, I think your recap was very strong, and I think we have a lot of work to do, but I think that on a much more macro, bird's eye view, I think that, I think certainly want to salute Nate Silver, Nate Silver and his, his followers and what they were trying to accomplish. And I think that our mission should be to prove to ourselves, to our departments and to our residents, that the money we are spending within those departments you speak of is done wisely. And also, are there, are there programs that we can either maybe even eliminate or categories of things that we can just do without because there are other things that are just too important? And if we find those things, fine, if we don't, but I think we need the intent that we're on a mission to find more, in my view, to find more money as part of the budget that goes to the school department. And I think our residents, I think the message was loud and clear at town meeting, that they were in favor of what he was saying, and it came damn close to, to voting to simply do what he wanted, he suggested, which was basically just put a, put a hacksaw out of the budget and just pull it from here and there on a, on a basic, a formula he had, and with a lot of common sense. But on the other hand, we need to dig deeper and find those, if they're out there, find it in ways that make sense and be efficient about it. And I think that we owe it to, certainly the town meeting member, the resident would do that and do it in a prompt, in a part matter.
Around the ocean.
Yes. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll just say that, I'll echo a little bit of what Dave mentioned about, about Nate's presentation. I think it was important, you know, kind of globally, to let not only the town meeting members, but also the public, get a sense for the frustration from the, from the parents. I mean, he's a parent, you know? And he's concerned about the, the size of the classes and the fact that we're losing, we're losing to competition. We're losing some teachers to competition, to benefits. So, you know, Gary's work on the, the insurance committee is, is, is very, very important. Nate's attempt to change the budget was a very difficult proposal, I'm sure, to come up with. But I think the goal was, if I can be so bold, was to get people to talk about it. And I think his, his main accomplishment, or his main goal was accomplished by getting people to at least talk about the budget in another way. I think, again, I think it would have been detrimental to some of the things that we're all trying to do in the background to offset some of the difficulties that we're having in the school budget, in the discussions that we're having with the state, with our state representatives, to try and come up with, you know, a, a plan, not just, you know, one point of attack, but maybe a two or three point of attack on trying to get some of the capital projects that we need in town done, getting a budget that works and keeps us competitive as far as a, a school department goes in a town our size. It all, the word competition comes out a lot when you're competing for the best teachers, the best employees at the DPW, the best cops. We, we need to make sure that we're, we're not at the highest levels. You know, I don't, I never want to be the guy paying the most, but I also don't want to be the guy paying the least, because you all know what happens when you, when you pay the least. So, you know, the middle of the road always seemed to work in my business, where we tried to keep things competitive, keep talent coming forward, stay competitive as a town. And you know what, even if you don't have kids in the system, you have to, you, you have to look at the value of probably the largest asset is your house. In a, in a great school system, definitely contributes to that whether you have children or not. So I congratulate Nate on, on his bold thinking. And it's really gotten everybody, I think, talking about the different types of approaches that we can have.
I agree. I think he, he did what he set out to do, which is get us talking. And we've been talking, certainly even since that. I do want to remind everyone, in the town meeting packet, we received a very detailed budget from the public schools. And just to say, to, it wasn't many years ago, which all we got was a line.
A number.
A number. But now to get a paper that shows us the percentage of, you know, what it costs the instruction, 75% of that budget is for instruction, 2% is from administration. So when people are saying, I think you're administrative heavy, it's 2%. Other services, 13%, maintenance and utilities, 6%, and tuitions, 4%. It was a very detailed budget, and I, I think that for some people that, that look at this, it allows you, if you open your packet before the day of the meeting, you have time to digest all that we are giving you to look at. That being said about town meeting, I also heard from people that they thought, you know, you know, they felt like a rubber stamp, everything had been decided. And I will use Jackie Figurito as an example. Jackie goes through that agenda and looks and reads and has, asks her questions. There is no rubber stamp. Jackie's gonna get an answer for a number of us.
Every year.
So, yeah, so Jackie was my mentor, my administrative mentor, so blame her when I'm taking my notes. But I think it was, having been on the board only for a few of these town meetings, but having attended as a town meeting member, I think it was one of the most robust meetings that we've had, and I, I was very, I was proud of us as a town.
Would you say?
Sure thing, Dave.
Thank you. I think that there was good synergy in talking about long-range costs. We're gonna be asking our residents to pay a lot of money, whether it comes out of enterprise funds or whatever, it comes out of our pockets to pay for these things. And I think that we owe it to the residents to say, we are spending all that other money wisely, and we're doing as, being as efficient as we can, and now we're ready to move forward with these projects and also to take care of our schools. But the way to do that, and our biggest supporter in long-range planning has been Jim Colley from the school department. He understands that the only way he gets the budget works is because they've been open and honest and on time and being very productive in terms of participating in that process. So I think we're in a great spot to be able to do all this, but we, we've got some work to do. And I, it was a great meeting, great participation.
And Dave, I'm quickly trying to find, I had two more points, so I will keep looking. One was, I, we also need to make sure we're not leaving any money on the table. And that being said, I will, I would have mentioned this a little bit later, but I did attend the fiscal, hang on, it's an acronym, Federal Funds and Infrastructure Office Community Meeting, and there are a number of grants, tax incentives, tax credits that may be available to Dartmouth. And we need to make sure that we're taking, we're availing ourselves of all of those, as well as all of our departments are collecting 100% of the, the fees and taxes that are due. And whatever we can do to make sure that's happening, that will be half the battle if we know the money that we have. So I will give a shout out to engage with long range. I'll hold it up, maybe they can get a little, as Dave mentioned, and he gave a presentation at the school, the town meeting, he also gave a presentation to this board. Long-range planning is looking at a number of possibilities, and you'll see that Tuesday, September 9th, they're gonna be talking about community service projects, and that meeting will be held at the Council on Aging. On Wednesday, September 17th, they're going to be talking about the pub, public school projects, and that meeting will be held at the Dartmouth Middle School. And on Thursday, September 25th, it's going to be the Public Works Projects, and that will be at the North Branch.
Did you read that backwards, Mrs. Smith?
Backwards, yes. Yeah. And I could even read it, it was cursive, so still pretty good. So I do want to thank everyone that was at town meeting, that there's still some town meeting holes, so if you want to be a member of town meeting, please call Sarah Haskell Ruder, the town clerk, see how you can get involved. And to those town meeting members, you are never a rubber stamp. Please ask your questions, so thank you for that. All right. Next, we have on the agenda, the Town Vehicle Policy Draft. So I'm going to ask Mr. McDonald to speak on this.
With the, with the advent of town vehicles, majority of communities have adopted a vehicle use policy, so that it's clearly written as to when you have a town vehicle, what you can and cannot do in a town vehicle. This policy was developed by reviewing the MIA's suggested policy, state policy, state guidelines from, from the state, and also eight other municipal policies. Created this draft, submitted it to Chris Vitale. Chris Vitale was working on one of his own. What you see is a hybrid of both policy developed by Chris and myself. It's been reviewed by town meeting, I mean, by town council, and it's here for basically a review, hopefully, an approval at the next meeting. It defines as to who can have, who should be available to have a, a town vehicle at their disposal 24/7. Generally, that would be the Director of Public Works, the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent of Infrastructure, which is Paul Pachico and Derek, Derek Martin, Park Supervisor, the wastewater, water, water and wastewater supervisor, and the Animal Control Officer. This policy does not circumvent or supersede the police department policy, they have their own separate policy, and it says that too. What we're looking to do is make sure that if you do take a vehicle and the vehicle is available to you, and it is, if you request a vehicle and it's granted, that you also follow the IRS guidelines, because having a work vehicle is considered a. A fringe benefit. And it is, should be reported as such, because right now, I believe the town is not doing that. And it needs to do that. And basically, you know, town vehicles belong to everybody, and we need to have a better control as to who uses the vehicles, why they use the vehicles, and whatnot. We also need to take a look at our fleet, because we do have some aging, aging Priuses that, you know, are not being used, and they're just sitting out there. You know, we're paying the insurance on them, we're paying the maintenance on them, and they're not being used. So we need to take a look at what we have, and pretty much, you know.
Thank you, Sean, for doing this. And I do want to recommend that we all take a look at this. I, in doing so, I also looked at the IRS code as a fringe benefit and saw a couple of ways that we could do it. Either the employee can self-assess and put it on their taxes, or it can come directly out of their paycheck. So it is something that we need to talk about. We also need to talk about whether it is in someone's contract or not in their contract. Vehicle for public safety, and they do list public safety, we have more people actually than in Dartmouth than would be under what they would consider public safety, so we need to look at that. And you're right, we also need to look at standardization of vehicle purchases, also making sure that all vehicles owned by the town either have the town seal or somehow have a lettering that alludes to the fact that they are property of the town of Dartmouth. So we have, this is a big undertaking, but long overdue, so thank you, Mr. McDonald, for bringing that to us. And ideally, if we could look at this and be ready for our next meeting, that would be. Actually, I know we have Cody coming on board, the 14th.
Wait till then.
Cody has a copy of this.
He's looked at it?
He's already looked at it.
Thank you. Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure he doesn't own something that he, he had any concerns with, so thank you for sharing it with him. So we should be able to look at that for our next meeting. Thank you.
Tried to cover all the bases.
Thank you very much. All right, on our agenda next is Boards and Committee Appointments. Now, as you know, as we have done these in the past, we try to make sure that we have people who have attended at least 75% of the meetings. So as we go down, I've done those calculations and have that information for you. Oddly enough, the first two on our list are actually employees, but they fall under this category. We have to appoint them on a yearly basis, and that's the Assistant Animal Control Officers, Stacy Rabello-Harty and Tracy Martin. So we are appointing them tonight to one-year positions as Assistant Animal Control Officers.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next, we have Community Preservation Committee. No shock, but Howard Baker Smith has attended 100% of his meetings. However, John Souzer, it's noted that he's only attended 40%. So I'm gonna ask that we vote on for Howie Baker Smith tonight, and I'm gonna say, we're gonna hold on John Souzer, because I want to know if we gotta, I mean, they may know that there was, you know, conflicts, but we just want to make sure that the, before we just, you know, that CPC is in favor of, of this, before we just.
So the question, the question that I have regarding Mr. Souzer is, who is he representing? Is he representing FinCom? Is, was he representing Planning Board? Because I'm looking at the names, and I see Joe Vier on the committee, so he represents Parks and Rec. Margaret Sweet is there, so I'm assuming she's Planning Board.
Okay.
So the question is, is he representing?
All right. Very good, liaison.
Might be ill, too.
So if he is a liaison, and I believe Susan Murray is, is the Health Board liaison.
Yes.
Or Agriculture, or somebody.
Yes.
Right. So the question is, is, is Mr. Souzer a liaison? Because if he is a liaison, then really that, that's.
That's up to that board.
That's up to that committee to appoint him. I mean, we appoint him, but it's up to the committee to create, you know, who they want to be their liaison.
All right.
Motion to approve Howard Baker Smith for three years on the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Excellent. Conservation Commission, next is Michael Keough, and he has attended 100% of the meetings.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
On the Cultural Council, both Carol Bliven and Lorraine Granda have attended 100% of the meetings.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next, we have the Dartmouth Tree Committee. Hmm, I'm going to screw up this last name. Adam Corwega has attended 100% of the meetings of the Dartmouth Tree Committee.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, the Greater New Befford Regional Refuge Management District Committee. Michael Gagné has attended 90% of the meetings.
He's a new appointment, so he's filling out, so this would be his full term coming up.
Of Refuge?
Motion to approve.
Oh, you're right, we did move that, so his...
He just was approved.
Isn't that interesting that they...
They have 50 out of 56.
Yeah, they submitted it.
With him on there.
With a few that he missed. So his ghost data.
He's a recent appointment.
Okay.
That could be his previous person who he took over, which was Ed Iacapone.
Well, Ed had a great, great run.
He had a good run.
All right, but we are appointing Mike Gagné.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a second.
Oh, second, please. Stan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the Greater New Befford Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee.
He's 100%.
Cynthia Marlin was 100%.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Special Police Officers, this is very similar to the Assistant Animal Control Officers, where we appoint them, they are paid employees. So we have Alan Shaw for a year, Mark Zalinski one year, Howard Wong one year, Joe Viera one year, and Richard Maderas one year. You will recognize, these are typically the offices that we pass on duty on the streets for projects, so...
Motion to approve.
Howard Wong's brand new, I believe.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next, we have Veterans Board Advisory. Now, Mr. Toomey, I know, has been a part of this for quite a bit of time. His attendance this time was 44%, so I think we'll just ask...
I don't think he was feeling that well.
Yeah, I don't think he was feeling well, but we will just double-check that.
Hold.
Yeah.
And on the Refuge Board, wasn't, I think that's right, Mike was on there for 50 out of 56, and...
No, Mike was just, he was just appointed.
He was just appointed DPW.
DPW, yeah.
So Ed's on, Ed's on the Refuge District now.
No, not new. Mike's been away.
So does Mike want to be on this? Did Mike step down? Now I'm confused.
I think Ed, I think we appointed Ed onto the Refuge District.
Oh, but you know what? Ed took Christine the Blank's place.
Yeah, Christine, so Mike's still on it.
So Mike's still on it.
Still on there, okay.
My goodness, Mike, yeah. Do we ask his wife Laurie, how many nights a week does she want him out of the house?
No.
All of them.
All right. Next, we have Waterways.
Motion to approve.
And we have Roger Race with 100% attendance. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
I pass this, thank you. All right. Gary.
So on the holds on that, Heidi, we're going to ask the chairman.
On the holds, we have John Souza, yep, and Joe Toomey.
Okay.
We'll follow up with...
And we just have a question for Mike Gagné.
I think that's right.
I think it, I think it may be as well. All right, Gary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So notifications have been received from Ever Source Gas that there will be resuming work on Solcom Road on June 23rd, rather than the proposed date of June 30th. Various departments have been notified without any concerns about the change of date. Also, as mentioned, we have finalized the contract with Health Resources Services Incorporated. The firm will be conducting the town's classification and compensation study. The study should be completed by early December, and at that time, the board will be able to review the data that's presented. And just as a reminder, that this Thursday, June 19th, town offices will be closed in observance of the June 19th holiday. Residential collection of the solid waste and recycling will be delayed by one day. The DPW office, along with the brush area, will be closed. The transfer station will also be closed, and will be open for a normal operating hours Tuesday, June 17th, 7:30 a.m. to 3:15 p.m., and Saturday, June 21st, 7:30 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Proposed Town Projects. I don't have that list in front of you, but I did meet with Gary, and in the future, we'd like to add columns that let us know how, where are they in the project, you know, if it's...
Status.
The status. They've broken ground, 50% built, or 100% built, occupancy permit taken out, and then we're going to add another column where we get the fees. I'd like us to know, be aware, how much money were, these groups were charged to do this. So in the future, we will be getting, we will see this as a packet, but we're working on those other columns. All right, old business, Mr. Gary. Is 40B update?
No, no additional business, other than we met at the Allen Dale Country Club, I believe, to, well, it was last, last week to discuss the...
Hawthorne.
Yeah, residents at Hawthorne. A lot of the members that were there were residents, concerned residents about the project. They presented some information about it, not completed information, but some information on the project, and I'd say there were probably about 130 people in attendance.
And they asked some very, very good questions.
They're not happy.
Were any answered?
Not, not many. That was disappointing to the people that were there. The presentation was poor.
I know we're going to be talking about that again.
Hmm, for sure.
Bliss Connor?
No new updates.
Lake Nokachoke?
No new updates.
Municipal Broadband?
No new updates.
And DEP Tattle five...
No new updates.
I know there's nothing. All right, next on our agenda is the Meeting Minutes. I personally reviewed them and felt that they...
Agreed. Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Select Board Updates. Mr. O'Neill.
I'll let, I'll let you do the meeting we had with Mike and Chris, if you want.
Okay.
Sure, yeah. So we met with the, our Senator Mark Montigny and Chris Markey, State Representative, after the poll that I had sent out to the departments requesting, you know, if they could see additional funds, what would that look like in the operations of their budget? So we met, I thought the discussion was really well, went really well. I think that they took that information that we gave them, are going to do a lot of research on the items that we did mention to them. You know, a lot of, a lot of the items that they do work on, they're all, their hands are tied also by the state, even though the proponents and advocates, obviously, for the communities that they represent. But I thought that discussion was positive. I look, I think that they'll be back for another meeting with follow-up. A lot of the stuff was legislation that had just recently changed, in finance, some of the stuff we had talked about, you know, the Chapter 70 monies, Chapter 90 monies, and just how, what do they see as far as the fit, and where Dartmouth looks like, you know, a few years down the line, five years down the line, with some of this maybe potential legislation that's going to change, what the 40Bs look like. So there were a lot of discussions, there was a lot of discussion, I think that, and our chair was there to add some points to that. I think it went pretty well for the initial go-around. And, you know, a lot of the time, the topics that were discussed from the department heads revolved around what could they do if they received additional funds? And sometimes it's not just about the money, it's the way that policy can change, to make the lives of those departments easier and more efficient. And that's kind of what I got out of it, and I know that there'll be more discussion going forward.
Yep, yep. So I had different, separate conversations with Chris and Mike, and they both wanted to meet Cody, the new town administrator who's coming in. So they wanted to do it as privately as possible, just to get a chance to meet him without, you know, too many questions and muddy in the waters. And also, we had probably, Gary did a great job of asking all the department heads for their top two or three issues, concerns with the state, so he was able to bring those to both Mike and Chris. They, you know, they, they wanted to come in, but they wanted, they wanted a smaller meeting, which we were able to pull together, and because, I think you get more out of the smaller meetings sometimes than, than the public meetings, and it gets off track, and they feel that they can speak a little bit more directly to us about some of the issues that they're having when we present the requests for different, different things in town to them. So I think it went very well, so thank you, Heidi, for helping put that together.
I did send out the recap of that to all members today, and I do think that it was really eye-opening for me, when we wanted to speak about something, and then we find out that they want, one, either one or the other, or both have been involved in the drafting of a bill that was impacting us. But they were very interested in if it's not working at the local level, how can, how can they help to resolve that? So that was helpful. And their willingness to work with, with the city of Fall River to assist us on, you know, getting some more water at a reasonable price would, I think, was my highlight and my takeaway.
Yeah, I think both Mike and Chris thought it was prudent for them to approach Senator Rodrick's in Fall River, and try to work something out where we would have, you know, another, another option as far as water delivery to the town, if nothing else, to be, to make us a little bit more competitive when, when we try and go out, if we need, if the wells go down, and we need to bring more water into town, we may be able to negotiate a better number than we, we have been in the last few years. That, that could actually turn out to be pretty considerable, considerable savings for the town. So hopefully, it works out. I know that, for, I was just with Mike the other night, that they're, they're working on it right now. So hopefully, that, that works out, and we, we get some good news soon, we can report back to the DPW.
Thank you. Mr. McDonnell?
I really have nothing, other than this Sunday at 1:00, in front of the town hall, there's going to be a dedication ceremony on behalf of Bill Moser. Robert Zaler and Ken Vincent are spearheading the effort. So we will have, it'll be a brief ceremony, the family will be there. So if you're interested in attending, please come on down, come on by.
So 1:00 in the front of this town hall?
Correct.
Anyone that has ever, ever worked with Bill Moser knows what a wonderful gentleman he is, so please come and celebrate.
That's beautiful, please. And if you'd like to make a donation, please drop off a donation, I'll bring it with you.
Anything else? Mr. Mickelson?
So, speaking of schools, and the need for property to put schools on in the future, I'm still working on this Hawthorne Country Club taking property. At this point, Anthony said to me that we need to, I need to ask you for your support. If you don't want to start that process, then fine, but I think we should get it out tonight, either vote for it or not vote for it, to move forward. And again, I've been, to clear the air about this property, I've been talking about this taking for over a year, maybe close to two years. So it's got nothing to do about the property and the owners and the development that they're trying to put through, has nothing to do with that. So...
I'm going to put this on the June 30th agenda, because unless it's on the agenda, we actually can't take a vote.
I want us to vote for it.
But prior to that, I know one of the things that we need to do is to find out how much this property is worth. So I will task you to call a realtor and see...
Yep, yep.
What is out there, and we'll have that information for June 30th. So thank you on that. Anything else?
Sure.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yeah, I, like all of us, I'm really looking forward to our new town administrator jumping on board. I love his approach, he's talking to us all individually, he's been active up till now, he's going to hit the ground running, but getting the pulse of what we feel our priorities are and putting it together so he can move forward, I think it's great, and we haven't had someone, Gary and his crew have done a great job, but we haven't had a full-time town administrator here for a while, and I think it's going to be great, and as well as we're doing, we've got, the sky's the limit with Cody coming on board, very positive about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It is not quite officially summer, however, Dartmouth Public Schools are released, so be careful out there as we start our meeting.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to get in here before you answer the motion.
Yes.
I had one more thing before you finish.
Okay, go ahead.
You want me to do it now?
Sure thing.
All right, so this is to kind of dovetail with the discussion that we had with Mike earlier. You know, this has been kind of in my craw for a while, and I wanted to get it to the committee, I'm going to, I'm going to give it to you in the form of a motion, if you want to table it for discussion, completely up to the committee. But this is the issue. The Charter has, in Section 6-5, Rules and Regulations, right, and how we address the issue of changes. So the, the section, the section reads, "A copy of all rules and regulations adopted by any town agency shall be filed in the office of the town clerk before any such rule or regulation shall become effective, and copies shall be made available for review by any person who requests such information. No rule or regulation adoption by any town agency shall become effective until 10 days following the date it has been so filed in the office of the town clerk. Attested copies shall also be kept available in the public library." That's it. So, so essentially, what's happened is, Mike came before us today to explain exactly what their board has, has adopted, as an autonomous board, and he's, he's at least given us the information for the public, so they can see exactly what the fee changes are. In that particular situation, it wasn't a process, it wasn't a regulation, but it was a fee involved in their, in their, their change, so I guess it would be under rule. My discussion on Charter Review with Anthony was, you know, it just doesn't seem fair. You know, there are, there are businesses out there that rely on information to make business decisions, and they look at the current rules and regulations, and within 10 days, they could be changed without any dissemination of information by the town to the public. I think it's wholly unfair, and it causes problems, it causes problems, it caused a big problem down on Dartmouth Street. And I'll make the motion, just so you can hear it, you can second it if you like, I'd like it to, and this doesn't obviously affect the Charter. The Charter cannot be changed by us, so I'll address the Charter at another time. However, I am referring back to the current section, where it says, "And copies shall be made available for review by any person who requests such information." So I make a motion to direct the town clerk to send a copy of any new rule change or regulation that the town clerk receives for posting per Section 6-5 of the town charter of the office, to the office of the Select Board, and the heads of all departments for their review. A copy of said new or amended rule or regulation shall also be copied and sent to the Town Communications Director for posting to engagedartmouth.com, Engaged Dartmouth, sorry, the town website and social media outlets. So essentially, what that means is, I'm using the "any person" as an opportunity for the Select Board to just request anything that's being posted on that board downstairs, because I can't tell you how many people have said to me that they've been in, you know, on a field visit, say with the DPW, and the DPW, you know, they're getting in an argument on-site because a rule change was made, but the applicant didn't know about it. And then we're needlessly putting those guys in a situation where they're getting yelled at for no reason, because the public didn't know about certain changes. In this case, in Mike's case, it was fee structured. So if it wasn't fee, fee structured, if it was rules and regulations that had, you know, real big effect on applications going forward, the public is not going to know that until it's enacted. And I think it's a little backwards. I think we should be, we should... it's enacted. And I think it's a little backwards. I think we should be, we should be encouraging, you know, changes, like at least he said, as you recall, July 1. He's going to make that change, but he's going to only make it effective July 1. So now people will have a chance to look at that, and they'll say, you know, if, if they have a problem with it, or, or they want to make a change to it for the better, at least they'll have that opportunity to do it. The current way that we do business, you don't have that opportunity. And I was told by Anthony, listen, you know, you're in business, you're supposed to be watching, watching the changes that come through. And my response was, you know, if you're a drain layer, and you're, you know, you're, you're coming home after doing your work, and you're just billing, you know, invoices till 11 o'clock at night, chances of you going on the town website to check out whether there was a change to a regulation in the last, you know, few days, it just doesn't make any sense. So I wanted to at least get this concept in your head.
I absolutely see your point, and I also think that it behooves us, as you mentioned earlier, to talk to all departments about when restructuring fees. I think we need to look at a date in the calendar.
In the future.
That it happens.
Right.
It can't be arbitrary. They've moved theirs for July 1. We're entertaining another one for October. You know, we've got to look at something a little better. That being said, I know that we can't make a motion or act on anything that hasn't been stated in our agenda. So I'll ask you to submit that to Gary.
All right, so we'll table it. I'll, I'll make a copy and get it to you.
Get it, and we can put it on the addenda for June 30.
All right. Any discussion on it, though?
But I do think, well, I also think, one, we want, we want Anthony, we want to make sure, we want to make sure that that, what you're looking at of the charter, which we only did grammatical errors on the omnibus, I don't even know if that's been changed on the website.
Not yet.
Well, no, it hasn't.
No.
So the other piece is, I know those of us that have served on charter before talked about the fact that we still were unhappy with several pieces of the charter. And so I think the other thing we will talk about is, at what point in time do we feel we pull the trigger on the need for an elected Charter Committee as opposed to the other? And that would have to be, you know, so working backwards, our next town election would not be until April of 2026. Don't think we have anything coming up the fall.
No.
So it would be something that we work towards. And we'll talk about that process. Mr. McDonald?
I understand, I understand Chris's concern, and actually, I agree with pretty much most of it, because basically it's, it's transparent. But this board can actually make a policy decision that's saying any changes in fees, not so much rules or regulations, but fees, cannot be done until effective until July 1 at the start of the next fiscal year. And that way, you know, that, that can be done by this board. Because basically, all fees have to come through us, with the exception, I believe, of the DPW. But, but even then.
But even then, if we recommend it, that if they're making changes.
Yeah, no, no fees get changed until the, until the fiscal year, July 1. You know, we can make that, we can make that a policy, we can make it, you know, that it has to be done 30 days prior to July 1, that everything has to be submitted by June 1, so that it releases a 30-day review, or a 30-day, you know, window for, for it to be looked at. That can be done. So I, I think, I think what you're looking at for the next meeting or meeting thereafter is Chris's suggestion, we can look at, you know, the, the policy on, on implementing fee structures and, and, you know, changing the fee structure and whatnot, so.
Thank you. I think that that dovetails.
Yeah, it does, I mean, it, it does not say fees in the charter, so.
Right.
You know.
But I do think that for all the boards that we interact with, making a fee change, it would be better to have them all be a universal time when that happens.
Once a twice a year, maybe.
As opposed to.
You know, give us an opportunity to.
January 1, April 1.
To put it into the public, so they'll know.
And then people, people will know, jeez, they change, they may change them come July 1. I better stop looking in.
Stop looking, right, exactly.
In June. So I actually made a note of May.
I just missed one of my notes. If I, for the next meeting discussion, I'd like to have a discussion about the, about the DPW board, changing it from three members to five on the charter.
Okay, that's a, okay.
Well, that can be done very easily by this board, and we can put it to town meeting in October, so that it's ready for the April election.
We'll have a discussion on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Gary, one more. You have your hand up.
So I think, just maybe piggybacking off what Mr. O'Neal said, as part of the budget process, each year, I send out a budget memo. And one of the, one of the paragraphs that I send out is asking the departments to outline any specific changes in objectives, priorities, and accepted events for FY '26. In this case, mentions to be made for personnel accounts, highlighting any differences between FY '25 and the previous year, and then talking about positions. We can also add something in there that we, we would like to have them look at the fee structure and fee schedule, so that in November of any particular fiscal year, they're already looking at that.
Yeah.
And, and I think that that would get their attention as to, and maybe we can develop a form or some kind of attachment to the, to the budget packet that I send out. So it has them every year looking to make sure that the fees are updated, that we're competitive with other communities. I think that that may be a good tool to use as part of the budget narrative that I send out each year.
And that is a reminder for them, now's the time for your board to be looking at it.
Board, your main department.
If they're a board, whatever they, they do that with.
I'll just add that, maybe add that sentence in there.
A robust discussion tonight as well.
Always.
Anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mittel, Mickelson. Almost, almost. All in favor to end tonight's meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.